Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for April 5th, Thursday. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Klicka?
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Ilert?
Here.
All our present, would you have a quorum? Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn into silent mode or off so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do have a couple of presentations to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. At this time, I'm going to ask a couple of people to join me at the podium. Ellen Orniki, who's Director of Emergency Communications and Management, and also Jody Prothee, who's with the Sheriff's Office. We have a proclamation this morning recognizing the important work that our emergency telecommunicators provide across the county and in some different jurisdictions. And it's important work. I've been in a few of those communication centers and watched them do their job, and sometimes it's varied, and it's not unusual to have difficult questions come up, but they respond in terrific professional fashion. So Ellen, I'll present the proclamation to you, and if you'd like to make comments, and Jody, you're welcome too, and I know you've got some folks here with you, so we'll bring them up here shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Ellen Orniki, Emergency Management and Communications. At this time, if I could have the dispatchers from Overland Park and Johnson County ECC, as well as Police Chief Don Chaz and Fire Chief Brian Deener come up.
Come on up.
As they're making their way up here, I'll just say a few comments. Major Prothee and I accept this on behalf of all the dispatchers that are here and aren't able to be here today, as well as those across the county. These individuals are incredibly dedicated to their profession, their working days, nights, weekends, and holidays, to be there to answer the call for service when somebody needs help. No one deserves this more than the individuals behind the scenes. So we're going to actually talk about two particular incidents that happened over the last year in Johnson County that really affected our communities. The individuals behind me represent dispatchers from the Overland Park Police Department, as well as Johnson County ECC, which dispatches fire and EMS. I will say just a few words about the incident, and then I know Chief Deener wants to say a few words as well. On March 20th, 2017, at 3:28 PM, an initial report of a structure fire was received in the area of College in Neiman. The fire originated at the City Place Apartment Complex in Overland Park, and due to high wind and burning embers, it quickly ignited homes in an adjacent neighborhood. The incident is reported to be the largest fire in Johnson County history, having two commercial structures and 25 residential homes damaged or destroyed. In the first hour of the incident, the Johnson County ECC and the Overland Park Police Department Communication Center collectively answered 165 911 calls, and nearly four times the amount of other emergency and non-emergency calls. The dispatchers at both departments coordinated response and communications for 86 law enforcement units and 63 fire and EMS units. Those units came from across Johnson County, as well as adjacent agencies. Dispatchers were also deployed to the scene to assist incident command. These personnel demonstrated professionalism and selfless service during this incident. They rose to the occasion on the stay, and their efforts played an integral role in mitigating further property damage, and most importantly, no loss of life in this historic fire. So with that, I think Chief Deener wants to make a few comments.
Thank you, Ellen. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good evening, or good afternoon. I usually do this in the morning. As one of the chiefs of the host city for this big event, as well as a representative from the Johnson County Fire Chiefs on the User Advisory Board, I'm definitely here to say thank you, not just for this grand event, but for the day-in, day-out, customer contact. There's not one response that we do that does not interface with the dispatch center to prescreen, make sure we are coming into the safest possible environment, which is unknown and sometimes can be very chaotic. Very much appreciate what they do every day, the investment that they put in to keep us safe and the public safe, and even though the City Place was an epic fire, we have had a lot of successes, the dispatch center was key to those successes and all the things that Ellen had mentioned. And so with that, we just want to give our gratitude and thanks and appreciate what they do every day.
So we have a few certificates to present. We'll start with the ECC. Dispatcher Mike Babcock. Dispatcher Chris Shilton. Dispatcher Ryan Rushkey. Dispatcher Mark Whalen, and Operations Manager Josh Lynch. And I'll ask Captain Eric Houston to come to announce the Overland Park Police dispatchers that are present, please.
This morning, from Overland Park Police Department, we have Dispatch Supervisor Pat Sack. We have Crime Analysis Lisa McMullen.
There you go.
We're very fortunate to have some of our department members cross-drained in our dispatch center, and so Lisa actually stopped what she was doing as her regular duties and came over to our dispatch center to help us out when she found out about the call without even being asked. We have Dispatcher Karen Horsel. We have Dispatcher Travis Morocco. And Dispatcher Katie Richmond. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm going to ask the Communications Division staff from the Sheriff's Office to step forward, please, at this time.
I'm Major Jody Prothee from the Sheriff's Office, and I have the privilege of overseeing our Communication Division. I would like to thank Chairman Ilert and the Commissioners for the proclamation this morning. I would like to introduce some of our communications staff that are present this morning. First of all, we have Captain Scott Bowden, Lieutenant Paul Haynes, Master Deputy Matt McGee, Lieutenant Greg Smith, Master Deputy Eric Wright. I'd also like to welcome Sheriff Cal Hayden and Chief Deputy Quigg here this morning. This morning, I would like to share an example of outstanding team performance that our staff exhibited last year. On February 22nd, 2017, at approximately 7:16 PM, a suspect began shooting customers of Austin's Bar and Grill in Alatham. Master Deputy Eric Wright, who was assigned to the Communication Division, was off duty in a nearby business as the shots began. Master Deputy Wright heard the gunshots and responded without hesitation to a very chaotic scene. He dialed 911 and was the first call received by our Communication Division. Arriving on scene, Master Deputy Wright observed two men with gunshot wounds. Due in part to his assignment as a Communications Deputy, he was able to rapidly triage the scene, ascertain essential details of the crime, and quickly provide the call taker with imperative information, such as patient status, suspect information, and locations of parties, of involved parties. Due to his years of experience in communications, Master Deputy Wright knew exactly what information the call taker needed. He advised the shooter had left the area, and 911 calls began flowing into our center. Master Deputy James Haney was working as a primary dispatcher for Alatham. He quickly set up an effective and safe perimeter for responding units, a task generally performed by the field supervisor. He was able to decipher multiple conflicting reports of suspect information and relay this to the field units in a concise manner. The Communication Division received 19 calls from this incident alone within a very few minutes. Staff members answering 911 calls were able to elicit necessary information from panicked callers, such as number of shooters, clothing description, and direction of travel. They each maintained a calm, mature presence under enormous stress. Those working other assignments used law enforcement databases to provide intelligence information about the suspects, such as associations and descriptors, as well as possible destinations. Lieutenant Greg Smith, the on-duty floor supervisor, provided a guiding hand to staff members applying 30 years of law enforcement knowledge. He assisted in answering 911 calls and the allocation of resources, specifically contacting the detention centers and acquiring perimeter personnel and transport vehicles for witnesses. He provided a big-picture view of the event, which allowed him to anticipate needed resources and ensuring the event was handled as efficiently as possible. Sergeant Matt Barney responded after hours to assist. He was off duty and came in. He answered 911 calls and assisted Lieutenant Smith. He sent a public message to citizens using Notify JOCO. Because of his decisive actions, citizens were quickly informed of vital suspect information and were able to be aware of any suspicious activity. Because we dispatched for seven different agencies, the on-duty staff had to balance normal duties with the demand of this event. There were several other high-priority calls in other areas that were created in other jurisdictions at the same timeframe of this event. Communication staff provided an exceptional level of customer service to all areas while still handling the Alatham critical incident in an efficient and professional manner. As we recognize National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week next week, I would like to thank all members of the Sheriff's Office, Communication Staff, and other dispatchers in the county that serve with professionalism every day and play a vital role in our public safety community. I would also like to recognize the staff that were involved with the Austin's shooting event. The exemplary work of all involved during this event are commendable and deserving of notice. I'm going to ask Sheriff Cal Hayden to please present this certificate to those that are with us today. The staff that were involved, Deputy Kathy Cotner, Deputy Aaron Overton, Master Deputy Eric Wright, Master Deputy James Haney, Deputy Jacob Vaughn, Master Deputy Matt McGee, Sergeant Justin R.C., Sergeant Matt Barney, Retired Master Deputy Jeff Lang, Retired Master Deputy Allison Anderson, Deputy Miguel Cervantes, and Lieutenant Greg Smith. Thank you.
You know, as I sit here and I look at Chief John Chaz and all the ECC staff and everybody here, you know, this is the utmost in cooperation between agencies. And as Commissioners, and having been where you're sitting, you feel such great pride in the fact that we all work together. Overland Park was just downstairs while they were getting their center worked on and constructed. They worked downstairs with our ECC staff. It's an awesome thing to have everybody work so closely in cooperation, especially during incidents like this, when things go amok very quickly, and you need all the resources you can muster together. And when that happens in Johnson County, it's a beautiful thing to see how everything works and clicks just like it should. So thank you for giving us the resources to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, thank you. Well, Ellen, and Jody, and Chief Deener, Sheriff, thank you very much for being with us today. You know, these are just a couple of examples of critical issues that happened in our community, and these men and women responded with a commitment to public safety and the professionalism that protects us all every day. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your service. We do appreciate it. I don't know that we've got enough room to do a photo. Why don't we go over here in front of this table, between the dais and the table? Come on over, and...
Commissioner, if you want to stand up.
You know that, yeah, right? Yeah, same here. We can't wait. We all...
I don't want to be like, "Fellers, nothing but a gold spot on you."
You grew a couple inches.
He's going to start using the less wax on the head.
He's coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Chad Von Anan to join me at the podium. Chad is Director of Johnson County Developmental Supports, and we have a proclamation recognizing National Autism Awareness Month, and I'll ask Chad to introduce those who are with him. I think the numbers are significant, and we need to be reminded, something like three and a half million individuals in our country are somewhere on the autism spectrum, and one in 68 children born are also somewhere on that autism spectrum. And so, Chad, I'll present this proclamation to you in recognition of the work of JCDS, our employment partners, and others in the community who support those individuals in this effort. If you'd like to make comments, why?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for recognizing National Autism Awareness Month. At JCDS, we serve about 500 people, and over 100 of those folks have an autism diagnosis, as Chairman mentioned. But today, I really want to introduce a couple of folks to you that are why we do what we do. First, we have Amelia Zankarda, who is here today, and she's been working at the Hy-Vee and Mission, and I also want to introduce her employment coach, Vicky Besko. And so we have a brief video we'd like to show you, and then I will turn it over to Amelia. So, thank you.
Very good.
She is one of our courtesy employees, and she helps pay groceries, she helps do returns, bringing items back to the shelly, and she also does little mini cleaning duties as well when needed.
I like putting like things with like things, like items with like items, categorizing items. I also like meeting with the customers, talking to the customers. I like getting the money. I need money to pay my rent, and other things, among other things. And I like meeting with my customers, and I like returning the favor of what they gave to me.
Amelia is a hardworking, fun, and creative employee, and she always finds a way to make the customers smile, and she's always working hard in these diligent duties.
Hello, my name is... Thank you, Chairman Ilert, Mr. Chairman Ilert, and fellow Commissioners. My name is Amelia Zankarda. Having autism may create problems, but it is not always a negative. I've got a great long-term memory, a great vocabulary, and extensive knowledge of medical information, as evidenced by an AA degree. I got at Johnson County Community College, and not that long ago, and a while ago, I got a medical certificate in medical coding, and this is the uniform I wore to work. And I also have this class I take with Sarah Mai, which is to solve some of those problems, which is appropriately named Problem Solvers. I have a... And I also like to watch... Not only do I like to look at medical information online, but I also like to watch sports on TV, including Royals baseball, Chiefs football, and KU men's basketball. Rock chalk, go Royals and go Chiefs! I've got jobs stacking groceries at the Mission Hy-Vee, which I had since last July, which is a major milestone in employment, and Project Search helped me cope with some of those problems and helped me find the job that I wanted. I like working at Hy-Vee because I like to get the... I need the money to pay my rent and other bills, and it helps me be part of the community. It's important to work because it gives me something to do outside the home, and it gives me an opportunity to work like any other adult, and it gives me a sense of accomplishment, provides me with a sense of accomplishment. And this is... And I also have Vicky, my job coach. Vicky Besko is with me.
Amelia, just stay here. Could you come back just a minute? Good job. Thank you for sharing that with us, and Vicky, thank you.
Thank you.
For the special work that you do in assisting individuals to work in the private sector. And Hy-Vee is one example of several private businesses that we have throughout the county who join in this effort, and so, good job, Amelia. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My pleasure. You're welcome.
And can we take a photo? And you can hold the proclamation? Would you like to make a picture?
Yes.
If there's anyone present who would like to address the Commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information.
Good morning. My name is Marilyn Kubler, and I want to say I feel very honored to be in the presence of Amelia, who has been on my caseload for many years. She's an awesome young woman. She's doing very well. I think some of you have received, or all of you should have gotten an email from me, and I was talking about something, a project that you all agreed upon, I thought, last year, to help individuals like Amelia and many others who have intellectual disabilities, developmental disabilities, to have some transportation funds. And it was my understanding that they would be allocated to individuals for their transportation needs, and I was actually told that, yes, this was going to happen. So I was very surprised last week when I heard that mental health had gotten a bulk of the monies, and then when I inquired, I talked to my Commissioner, thank you, Jim, for sending Josh over to call me, which seemed to help me understand a little bit more of what was going on. But it sounds like the money that we thought that was going to go for transportation needs is going for different things, and I have the email from Chad that said, here's what he understood, that there was 200K budgeted for the benefit of paratransit special population riders. Of that, 100,000 is budgeted for required federal accessibility compliance of paratransit routes, which I don't even understand what that is. 25K is for the comprehensive review study of all county-provided special population transportation, and then 75K for the mental health program. So the transportation provided through mental health is directed primarily to those engaged in community employment, consistent with the Board of County Commissioners' other transportation priority of job access. So many of my individuals work in the community. Many of them, they have to pay rent, they have to pay transportation costs, and they only get a small amount of social security, which is reduced if they have a job in the community, and most of my individuals, for sure, work maybe two to three days a week and maybe four hours a day at that. So you know that they're not going to get a huge income, and they really have a lot of expenses. So I guess I'm here on behalf of all those individuals that are not getting any kind of support from the county, and I'm asking that you reconsider this, and that you go back and you talk about it, and you say, "We'd really like to help these individuals with their transportation needs." So that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard, that will conclude the public comment portion of our agenda. I do have a couple of notes for the record. I will be administrative resolution number WD-18-004 enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and provide for the assessment of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 79th and Mission Road. Also, one final and two partial release of easements for the consolidated main sewer district of Johnson County, Kansas, due to the removal of a sanitary sewer line at 81st and Broadmoor Street in the city of Overland Park. That concludes notes for the record. Moving to the consent agenda, will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving the March 15th, 2018 business session minutes. Item number two, consider approving an agreement with KC P&amp;L to relocate electrical utilities necessary for the 199th Street shoulder safety and structural improvement project between Homestead Lane and Gardner Road at an estimated cost not to exceed $142,920.26. Item number three, consider approving the application and data hosting agreement with Douglas County, Kansas. Item number four, resolution number 017-18, consider modifying the current county assistant road system, cars, eligible routes list. Item number five, consider authorizing a phased implementation for evening flex route transit services on Medcalf Avenue, 75th Street, on or after July 1st, 2018, in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Is there any Commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately?
Chairman, if I could remove number five for further discussion?
Okay. So noted. Any other? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? All right, there being none, smack for the Commission. The motion would be in order for items one through four. Mr. Osterhaus?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items one through four as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exclusion of item number five. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Item number five, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I have just a couple of questions, if it'd be okay to ask Josh?
Sure.
Powers, Mr. Powers, come and join us. Just, I apologize that I didn't get to you with these questions during the week. Outside of being a Commissioner, my workload has increased dramatically in the last few weeks, so I've got a couple of questions on this item that I wanted to ask about for further clarification. I'd like two specific questions. One is, does this $300,000, that's an annual... One is, does this $300,000, that's an annual cost, does it have, is there an automatic renewal, or will we see this again in a year? And further, the second question being, how will we define that this route was successful? What is the end goal in terms of, is it in terms of a fare? Is it in terms of, of reduced cost and fare pieces? Is it in terms of the number of riders on the route? How do we define success that, should we come back in a year to revisit this issue, that we can say it either succeeded or it failed? So if you could answer those, I would appreciate that. Yes, sir. Chairman, commissioners, Commissioner Brown, thank you. Uh, so the, starting at the, with the first question, this $300,000 has been included in transit's budget, so that is an ongoing, uh, amount that would reoccur. Uh, it wouldn't come back to you for renewal unless that was a request, and certainly we would, uh, respond to that. As far as the goal of the evening ridership, which is this piece, it's kind of, uh, it's, it's multi-layered. Ridership, obviously, is something that we want to increase. Having service that extends past 5:50 in the evening, which is the last trip out of the plaza on this route, it gives people a sense of security, so that if they go and travel in the midday, they know that they can get back past 5:50 in the evening. Similarly, for service industry folks, uh, obviously, if you're going to work at an Applebee's or what have you, uh, those folks are not going to be able to utilize the service unless it, uh, extends into the evening. Similarly, uh, we want to try to engender support from employers to help us sell passes, employers in the area that would benefit from this service, from getting their employees to jobs. And then similarly, as you know, in, along Metcalf and in downtown Overland Park, there's been a tremendous amount of development, the number of apartment buildings that are either, uh, full, uh, becoming full or online to be constructed and, and start housing folks. So we want to have the service where the density is high, and so, in answer to the last part of your question, um, we would like to see higher fare recovery. The, the fare won't change, but we'd like to see more people paying fare, which helps offset the cost of the service, and we'd like to see higher ridership. The typical standard in the industry that we use is three years to understand what a new service would look like, a new route. Now, obviously, the service on Metcalf is not new, it would just be the evening portion. So we'd like to see after three years, a 10% increase in ridership on the entire route, but because this is a brand-new piece in the evening, we'd be starting basically from zero, and we would track that metric going forward. Uh, we'd like to see around 10,000 people a year utilize the evening portion, but again, that would probably wouldn't be achieved until year, excuse me, year three. So is, is the 10,000 number, is that unique riders, 10,000 unique people, or is that 10,000 cycles? Cycles or trips. So trips, so for 10,000, one trip from downtown to 75th and Metcalf is one, to go home is two. Correct. So 5,000? Unique riders. Okay. Um, okay. I, I'd like to ask, as we're going forward, when we're expan, Chairman, if it would be okay, I, I don't want to burden the commission with all this, but I'd like to see on an ongoing basis, some metrics that shows what, what has happened on a yearly basis as we're going through this. If it's a three-year trial, I, I can live with that, but that I know as we're going that we're moving, marching towards success, or we're not. I, and that would go, for me, I'd also like to know about the Edgerton Route, the Edgerton-Gardner expansion that we did a month or two ago. I'd like to keep up, as that, as it's rolling out and as it's rolling along, how is it going? Just updates as we go along, I would appreciate that. Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, I think all of our routes are subject to review based upon, uh, performance of those routes, and I know we've had changes in the past, and I, I, I assume there'll probably be changes in the future too, but, uh, so that is a review that's done. Mr. Klucka?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, Josh, um, as, obviously, I've always been an advocate, and will continue to be an advocate for, for transit, but I too have some concerns, and I think in the long history that I've had on the Johnson County Advisory Board for Transit, there's one of the concerns I've always had, um, is it seems like it's always in a budget crisis that we review the routes, or we put it off. I recognize that for a new route or certain services, we need a, a certain amount of time to get some comfort level with those routes. I'm okay with three-year type process, but, um, as, as the chairman says, we always have a chance to review the routes. I'd like to see, um, a possibility that a policy be set up by the board, or from this board, um, passed on to the Transit Advisory, or the Transit Advisory Board, that all routes and all services go through a three-year review cycle with metrics coming forward of saying, "Yes, this is worth, the ridership is doing what we want, no, it's not," and with, if it's not, what the alternatives are. Do we need to change the model and what we're using for that service, or do we need to cancel it and redirect those, uh, those, uh, resources to where they will be more appropriate and consistent to that? So my request is, um, I'm, I'm going to definitely support this. I, I, I know this has been a demand coming from Overland Park and, and trying to deal with the, the merchants and so forth up and down the line. I'd like to see how this plays out, but, um, I, I don't want to advocate a formal sunset process, but I think we need to have a, a personal discipline process here that forces that review every, every three years, and not only on this, but all of our services.
Sure, and if I may, I'll just-
You have a comment?
Just real quickly, and I think, Josh, maybe we can make available via an email, there are monthly reports produced on all routes in Johnson County, ridership, and just maybe when those are produced, that, uh, they can be emailed to review at the commission's pleasure.
Of course.
Josh, let me ask you, this is identified as Metcalf, 75th Street. Is it, uh, 75th Street just the Metcalf, or does it go further west?
So this would be evening service on both routes.
So 75th from west to Quimera?
Yes.
Does it go further than that?
It, it goes, it stretches all the way from Truist, the service from Truist all the way to Quivera.
Okay, all right. Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mr.-
Excuse me, Mr. Ashcraft?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, I, did you have something else I don't-
I'm ready to make a motion on it whenever-
Okay. Um, well, Mr. Brown, when you first raised this issue, I thought, uh, well, we discussed this last week, and I really didn't have any concerns about what I thought I understood from, and I don't remember Dick's last name.
Uh, Joe. Dick Gerald.
Dick Gerald, uh, because he, he gave a presentation, uh, because you do have, uh, performance measures in here, but reflecting on what Commissioner Klucka has said in particular, uh, to me, it makes a lot of sense to have a more formalized process, and you can call it sunsetting or whatever, on some kind of cycle. And three years is reasonable. Uh, I could, you could debate that, and I could be persuaded differently, but to have something like that, because one of the things that I constantly hear from people, and even though Dick is not here, I'll say big box buses, we, I receive complaints continuously, um, about seeing buses that seem to be underutilized, and with the changes in technologies and service delivery options, and I know KC ATA is looking at those, which is great, uh, I think that discipline, as you referred to, makes a lot of sense, because this is a technology that, um, may have worked in the past, may not have worked in the past, but will continue to do the same stuff over again, and it just, it just doesn't make sense. So I'll support this, this resolution, or this action. I, I have that hesitancy and will continue to have that. I just, I, I want transportation to be successful, but, uh, I'd like to know how we really want to measure success, so.
All right. Ms. Osterhaus?
There's a question for the county manager. Um, would you like a motion in regards to that review process that it sounds like most of the commissioners want, or would you just be able to do that administratively?
Either way, we'll do it.
Okay.
We can do it administratively.
Sounds good.
I, I don't know that we need a motion. I, I don't want to be restricted to three years. Quite frankly, it seems to be like-
Well, as, as Chairman, I'm not hearing you. What did, what did you say?
I said, I said, "I don't know that we need a motion," and I wouldn't want the motion to restrict us to a three-year review.
I'm just saying, for a review, not a timeframe, just for the record.
It seems to me like those reviews are inherent in our, in our budget process, quite frankly.
Mr. Chairman?
Agreed.
Yeah. Um, I, I tend to disagree a little bit. I know the budget process tends to promote that a little bit, but what's happened is, and I've seen this for 10 years on the Transit, uh, on the Transit Board for Johnson County, is, um, the, the lack of formality or accountability in those, uh, that checks and balance on the three years has kind of promoted a lot of this, some of this, um, which I say, the services that are expensive but maybe not appropriate, continue for a lot longer than what they should, and therefore, it's inhibited us from using those funds in other forms of transit in the, in the deal, uh, in the process here. And it's just, it slows down our process to make the adjustments and, and changes when there's not some type of a disciplined approach, so that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
My suggestion would be, if you want a motion, let's do it on an annual basis. Uh, ask for a report from the advisory committee on the routes.
That's fine.
And, uh, so that would be my suggestion. Why don't we have the motion, Mr. Brown, and you can add that as an amendment if you desire.
Sure, for an annual review. Is that what I heard you say?
Right, directing, directing the advisory council to bring to the board, uh, data in regards to all the-
Okay. All right, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. I move to approve a phased implementation for evening flex route transit services on Metcalf Avenue and 75th Street on or after July 1st of 2018, in amount not to exceed $300,000, and further ask for the Transit Council to bring forward on an annual basis review of ridership and cost expense. Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any further questions or discussions?
For clarification, is that, uh, that motion should include by route and what by service, and, um, it would be my suggestion that when that comes through, you have recommendations as far as continuing or what the options are.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the consent agenda, item number six.
Application number SE-PDP-3369OX, consider a request from Dan Knight, applicant, and Mark Calvin Dunn, landowner, for a preliminary development plan, a plat, for five residential lots, Blue River Estates, on 19 acres, zoned PRU 1A, planned resident, residential urban, single-family 1A district.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jay Lifes, Planning Development Coach Director. Uh, this agenda was brought to you, uh, from the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board. Uh, it was presented February 7th. Uh, before that board, it was unanimously approved at that time. Uh, during the meeting, there were some concerns about traffic along Kenneth Road, so, so the applicant, working with staff, uh, had a neighborhood meeting that was held on, uh, March 21st to talk, 21st to talk about some of those traffic concerns, and, uh, the meeting was, essentially, that what the concerns are is enforcement of a stop sign just north of the project, and so, uh, it was a successful meeting, so that's why it's brought to you. Uh, it was delayed, uh, for, for a couple of weeks while we had that, that neighborhood meeting. Um, the item is a five-lot, um, plan or plat. Uh, there's an existing home on, on Lot 5, the, approximately two to three acres, total of a 19-acre subdivision. Uh, the applicant requesting approval of the plat and plan, as well as a waiver, uh, to leave Kenneth Road in its existing condition south of the Dolma.
Okay. Questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make? All right, so noted. Uh, anyone else who would like to direct, uh, address the commission on this item? There being no one else to be heard, just back for the commission, a motion would be in order. Mr. Klucka?
I move to approve a preliminary development plan and preliminary plat for residential subdivision located at 15980 Kenneth Road, to be known as Blue River Estates, and grant a waiver from the minimum infrastructure road requirements set forth in the record of the proceedings of this matter, and subject to the stipulations and reasons recommended by the zoning board.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the application and preliminary, uh, development plan as noted in the motion. Uh, any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items on the action agenda?
No, sir.
All right, turning to reports and communications, uh, Ms. Postock Ferguson?
Chairman and commissioners, you have before you two items. The first one's the city of Overland Park. On March 19th, the city council approved the establishment of a TIF district, Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment District, for Metcalf Crossing, generally located at the northwest corner of Metcalf Avenue and Shawnee Mission Parkway in the city of Overland Park, and the board can, can officially veto use of county tax dollars related to the creation of the district. Second item, major project update you have in your packet, and I would like to draw your attention to the last page on Tomahawk, just this week, Lee would approve the, the work hours memorandum of understanding at their, uh, April 2nd city council. Chairman Ilert, Commissioner Schaefer, Joe Waters, Susan Pecaric and team, Tammy and others, um, Erin Witt, we're all present, and so, that was a great movement. Um, that was kind of our last big hurdle in getting the project delivered on time, so this is, for this phase. Um, so it's an important cooperative agreement just to keep the timeline going, so appreciate everyone's support and help there. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Postock Ferguson, uh, on the, the TIF, the information packet, I want to thank staff that, or maybe Overland Park staff for providing it a little more thorough than, uh, uh, some that we've seen in the past, so I appreciate that. I had one question, uh, on page 16, it has, uh, some tax rates and some ineligible for TIF, um, or for tiffing, if that's, I don't know if that's a verb or not, but, uh, TIF coverage, and it looked like the state's tax share is ineligible, and, uh, a little over half of the Shawnee Mission school districts, uh, does Johnson County, how, how would Johnson County, or can Johnson County apply for, uh, some, some of its tax being ineligible for tiffing? Is that a, is that a state legislative item, or is that at the discretion of the city?
You're welcome to go to the state legislature and support that position.
Well, maybe that's a position that, uh, we as a county should take forward to the state legislature.
Well, if a majority wished to do that, that would be fine.
What?
But yes, my understanding, Mr. Jared, it would take action by the state legislature.
I'm not aware of how they're declaring certain things ineligible, but we do not have the ability to do that, so yes, it would take some form of-
Yeah. Well, we as a county, yeah, but it would be possible for us to make a request and for them to allow that, or it-
I don't know any way the, the city could respond at our request to make certain amounts ineligible. If they tried to do a fee in lieu of, that has to be proportionately distributed, so I'm not sure how they're allocating what's eligible and what's not.
I think, I think you can recall here, a couple of years ago, there was discussion, and I believe it was the capital portion, uh, for school districts, uh, that, uh, was excluded from the, from the TIF process, and that was as a result of state legislative action, as I recall. So, yeah, it would take something like that. Mr. Brown?
Chairman, thank you. Uh, I, I would like to ask staff to help us with, with me, specific, maybe all of us, with that. I'd like to understand what is the mechanism that, that they're using to exclude portions? I don't know that I'm in favor of doing that or not, but I don't know nothing about it to understand that, so I'd appreciate some educational background on what, how they're doing it and what it requires. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, uh, legislative update.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Cindy Green, County Manager's Office. It's been a whirlwind week over in Topeka. Um, they've been focusing on education, um, finance, and some constitutional amendment, potentially. Um, the House has got a $525 million plan for K-12 over the next five years. It initially failed, they made some adjustments and tweaks to it, excuse me, and then the bill finally did pass. Um, on the Senate side, they had a bill come out of committee, um, that would roughly raise $250 million. They are actually in caucus, or going into caucus this morning to discuss that bill on the Senate side. Um, Senator Denning, um, created some media coverage when he said that they would not do anything until a constitutional amendment, um, had passed the House and Senate that would, um, prevent the courts from being involved in this and stop that. They have backed off a little bit on that, because the Senate is meeting this morning and actually are going to be hearing one of our bills that we're very interested in, and that's our election- and that's our election commissioner bill. On Monday, it was put into what they call a conference committee report. So there were three bills that were combined in there, one of which is our election commissioner bill, as we had stated it. The only change to it was they changed the implementation date of, instead of on publication, it was when it was going into the Journal, which is typically July 1st. So that was not a major change that we can't live with. So that'll go in front of the Senate. We hope to get it passed out today. There is some friction still. There's a senator that's opposing it, because they want more restrictive parts in it, and we were pleased with what's come out, and we don't want them to mess with it. And then on the House side, we've got some opposition to it, too. So it is not a done deal, but we will be watching it closely, and hope to have good news for you next week, that it's come out about the House and Senate, and waiting for the governor to sign. There's also a conference committee that's come out of the Senate, House and Federal, Fed and State Affairs Committee, and that's got our IDD bill in it that we've been watching in regards to background checks. And this is important to our JCDS folks. They've been keeping a close eye on this, and we're hopeful that that's going to get some action and movement, too. So those are the critical things that we've got in play right now. Not to say a lot won't happen yet this next couple of days, but it could be very quiet, and they aren't sure when they're coming home. But when they do come home, they're supposed to be on break for about two and a half weeks, and have time to regroup and see what else has happened. And I am open for questions.
Could, should note, the election bill issue has to do with the fact that the four large urban counties, including Johnson County, the election commissioner is appointed by the Secretary of State. And it's been opined that, by the AG and the Secretary of State, that that individual, whomever is appointed, has complete authority over their budget. And whatever amount of money they want to spend, the Board of County Commissioners must approve that money, whether it involves salary increases, or any amount of money that the election commissioner wants to spend. Currently, we have no ability to, to do anything but confirm. Also, the bill specifies that the election commissioner would follow county personnel policies. So those are the two things. There must be some oversight by elected officials for that budget. And secondly, the election office must follow county personnel policies. So that seems to be a fairly easy choice to approve and to support, but you never know. So, any other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Green, the first item, unlawful passing of waste collector advances, I mean, we really need a state law for this?
There must have been some people that wanted to push that through. We were, we didn't really take a position on it.
Okay.
So, but because it's a county, I mean, it would have packed our sheriff's department such, the lobbyist puts it on the report of bills that impact the county.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. I was in Topeka last evening and had conversations with several of the nays on, on the election commissioner issue. I don't know how much headway I made, but I did engage them in that conversation, let them know that this is important to us, and to the other three big counties, and that Douglas County should be, they're only a couple of thousand people away from this, becoming really important to them, too. So I think we made some progress. I guess we'll find out when it comes time for a vote.
Very good. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Turning to Commission comments, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Saturday morning, I opened up the Kansas City Star, and on an inside page, at the bottom of the page, an article more than half a page long, was an article about our county manager. That's what I called her. It's about, if you had a chance to read it, you should.
Rock chalk.
You should have. And with a rock chalk. It's about her and her involvement in the KU Big Four, Final Four games. And it was an extensive interview, you could tell, because she was quoted many times up and down that article. Plus, there was a picture of her and her family at the last game 10, 10 years ago. So anyway, I hope you make a comment about that before we leave. Okay, Penny? I want to make sure, I was, I was going to bring the article today, but I, it was on the wrong stack last night, so I forgot to bring it. But I will bring it to you next Thursday, okay? I hope you other people had a chance to read it. It was quite enlightening. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Klicka?
Thank you. I have two items here. The first thing I'd like to get a word out to everyone is, on Saturday, at the Antioch Park, which is at Antioch and about 65th Street, the Parks Department will be reopening Dodge Town, and we're really excited. And I've been able to see some of the previews of that, and it's going to be really cool. I encourage, I know it's going to be cold, from what I understand, on Friday, but if there's a chance to get out there and see what's going on there, it's, it'll be worth the time and effort.
Much will be served.
And that will be at 10:30 on Saturday morning. And from all reports, it's going to be another cold morning. So the other thing, Joe, if we can have a conversation relative to some appraisal issues that you can work out with the appraiser, but I've got one issue that deals with public information issues, and, and what can, what can be released and what can't, and the calculation of the, the calculation of appraisals. The other one has to do with VA. If there's any benefits for VA residents and, and those with disabilities. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you are going to make mention of this, so I apologize if I am preemptive, but yesterday, unfortunately, was the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. King. There were celebrations and recognitions earlier this year, but I just didn't want this, this time to go to pass, because 50 years ago, 1968, was a, a year that made an imprint on a lot of us. It was a year that saw a lot of changes, some of them not real good, but some of them that really, really are at the heart of what America is today. And Dr. King was a great man, and a lot of those events, I think, affected our, our history and who we are today. And while we may reflect on times now being contentious and rambunctious and hard to fathom, 1968 was, well, put any concerns about today to shame. I'm, I'm, I'm proud of who we are and where we're going, and I know we'll be successful. We made it through 68, so we'll make it through 18.
Mr. Allen?
No comments.
Mr. Osterhaus?
Well, I can't really top what Commissioner Ashcraft said, so I'll just say that I, too, had meant to mention Martin Luther King's, the anniversary of his assassination. I know many of us here, as Commissioner Ashcraft mentioned, went to the celebrations that had happened throughout the county. Had an opportunity on Monday to meet with Dr. Ziegler from the Shawnee Mission School District, and Nick Peterson from Burns &amp; McDonald, and talk a little bit about some of the workforce development stuff that the Shawnee Mission School District is doing at their new advanced center off of 71st and Antioch, doing some wonderful things for students in the culinary arts, aerospace engineering, some just really amazing things that Shawnee Mission School District is doing. And then, you know, KU didn't win a national championship, which I know our county manager is a little upset about, but they did win a national championship in debate. And so, I thought that was important to recognize, that even though they didn't win one in basketball, they got one in debate, which my understanding is, they do very well in debate, and they've won other national championships. So, so Penny still has something to hang her hat on, you know? That's all, Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of trackbacks, 1968 was the year I was born, so I wasn't here for all that. I read about it, but I heard, ugh.
Rager.
And then, yeah, unfortunately, Jayhawks didn't win. That was, that was certainly disappointing, but proud of the, proud of the team, proud of K-State, too, and Wichita State for getting in the tournament and going as far as they did. So it made it, certainly, they all made it very fun to watch. Just one more note, tomorrow morning at 7:45 in beautiful, big Edgerton, Kansas, we have a grand opening of the new Dollar General, and I will be there for that, and invite anyone here or watching to come and join us. 7:45 tomorrow morning, I'm sorry, Saturday morning, Saturday morning, at 7:45 for a grand opening. Should be nice and cold. Bring a coat. Thank you.
We do have a Committee of the Whole meeting, which is scheduled to begin at 10:30. Obviously, we're going to be just a little long on that time, but to discuss, to receive information regards to the wastewater capital improvement program. And again, tomorrow morning at Antioch Park in Dodge Town, dress warmly, at 10:30 a.m. And on April 11th, we'll have our annual employee recognition reception. That'll be at 3:00 p.m. at the Ritz-Christel. And I did visit with Mr. Jackson, the disabled veteran this morning, about the appraisal issue. Be glad to pass that information on. We do not have a request for an executive session, so that concludes our agenda.